Here, over 300 pages, so I hope you brought some flashlights with you. We will open the Town of Lake Lor regular council meeting Tuesday, May the 11th at 5:00 PM. We will call to order, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written? Or are there any edits or additions?
Madam Mayor, I have a, an amendment to the agenda, which would be new business item C, UAB member appointment. Quick update, recent activity from the UAB to solicit for potential appointees. That, that process, we do have one person that's put in an application, but has not been reviewed yet. So frankly, there are no applications. So I move that we remove new business item C, delay it to the next meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other additions or amendments to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, new business item B, based on our special meeting packet from Marine Commission, item B, request for removal on that for public input first. And then in the interest of full transparency on that, as we continue gathering information from our constituents.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bryant. Any other amendments or edits, additions? Then do I hear a motion?
I'll just say, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with those two modifications, eliminating item B and item C from today's agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Diorio, second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Then the agenda stands adopted as amended. Thank you very much. We do have a formidable, we have three public hearings that we are looking forward to. I did want to take a moment under the mayor's communication, just to share a few thoughts. We've had a lot of meetings today and we have a lot of different, there are a lot of different facets to our discussions right now that are going on, both at town council and, and in the Town of Lake Lor. And I think that it is important for us to explain that we are dedicated as a town council, both to open communication and to transparency and clarity with everyone in the Town of Lake Lor. That is extremely important to us, and that is the way we are ensuring that we, what we do reflects what the people who live in Lake Lor like to do. In particular, there has been some conversations, which is, is wonderful, and about the lowering of the lake, the drawdown of the lake this year. And so I just wanted to spend a few minutes just to chat about that process, not with any specific date, but just to let everyone know that certainly we are concerned, as always, about the people who live on the lake, enjoy the lake, who live in Lake Lor and enjoy the lake, and who enjoy seeing the lake at full pond. But we are all aware that there are many things that need to be done for us to maintain our lake, so that we continue to have this Lake Lor and to continue to have the use for it. There are some things that are simply not within our control, which are dictated to us by other parties, DEQ, people from the state, of the availability of contractors, that determine when we can begin some of the projects which we are dedicated to. One in particular being the replacement of our sewer system, but also our sewer access valve. We are not always the ones who make the decisions of what that timing is. So we are a little bit at their mercy. We continue to work with them and we continue to hope that we will be able to implement, to begin those projects when we plan to. Our goal is always to give everyone as much lead time, so that they can plan their activities, their families' activities on the lake. In the last two years, last year by Mr. Kurt Wright, our town engineer, the year before that, by Mr. Dean Gibbons, we created, we created a schedule, which was published, which was great, gave everybody a good idea of when the lake would begin to be lowered, when it would be back at full pond, and everything that was scheduled to take place during those times. And that is important information, and that is information which everybody in Lake Lor deserves. There, once again, as soon as it is possible for us to create that schedule definitively, we will. We are having a meeting on May the 18th with our, with La Bella and our other engineers, who are in charge of our projects, with our town engineer and other members of the council, to have a discussion about when we will begin that process of lowering the lake. One of the things I did want to bring up, so it always seems as though lowering the lake is inconveniencing everyone, and we certainly see that, and it gets sometimes hard to get a little bit excited about the fact that you're replacing your sewer system. But one of the things I did want to bring up, and I think we all need to remember, is we were so very fortunate that we received a grant this year from the North Carolina DEC, DEQ, excuse me, for dredging. And because of that grant, because of the funds from that grant, we are able to spend over $800,000 this year dredging both hydraulically and with an excavator in order to dredge our lake. And we know how important that is during this last season. We've been able to witness how in dire straits some of our, the depth of our, our lake is. The thing is, those funds, which we've referenced before, but I think it's important for us to factor this in on our process, those funds have to be used in the year in which they're granted, and that is 2021. So that means that by December, we have to use those funds and we have to accomplish that dredging. In order to do that dredging, not the hydraulic with the excavator, which is so important, the lake is going to have to be lowered. So though it may be that we may not be able to start some of the projects, which we hope to, we definitely are not going to waste that money, which we have received, and we are going to move forward and ensure that we are able to accomplish that part of the project with whatever other parts of the project that we can. And I simply say this because I want everyone to understand, I know that everyone has plans, and it is not our intent in any way, shape, or form to inhibit people from enjoying the lake with their family or their friends, but we are not able always to determine the exact date that we're going to begin to lower the lake. Last year, we were very fortunate that we were able to contain the lake to just three weeks, and it was just a marvel that everything that needed to be done was done within that three weeks, to be honest with you, and that is our goal this time too. So I just want everyone to know, we appreciate and we empathize and we commiserate with everyone over the fact that there will be some times in this next year when the lake will be lowered. We do not at this time know how long it will be or when it will start, but there will be some period in 2021, this fall, when the lake will be drawn down. We cannot predict accurately every year after that, because it depends upon many different things. Once again, engineering, it depends upon agreement with the state, it depends upon contractors, it depends upon funds. So I bring this up, we will have more to speak about at our next town council meeting, and as soon as it's possible, we will present that schedule for everyone, so that everyone can begin to make their plans. I ask that you have patience with us in doing this. Every single project that is being done is being done to help rehabilitate, in some case, our lake and to preserve our lake for ourselves and our families to use. So I just wanted every none to one, we understand your concern about it, and as soon as we can get this information out to you, we will. All right, that having been said, we will move to our next order of business, which is our public hearing. There are three public hearings here, and each one will have to be addressed independently, as they are three different ordinances. The first is ordinance number 21-05-11, amending chapter 92 zoning regulations. Mitchell, would you like, would you like to address this?
Sure. So ordinance number 21-05 of 11 is an amendment to chapter 97 of the zoning regulations. The state of North Carolina updated the general statutes, and as such, the land use regulations have been updated to section 160D. The town had to update their zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance to ensure that our ordinance is still aligned with the state required land use regulations. These regulations, our original regulations and our current regulations, have been reviewed by the local cog, the Isothermal Planning and Development Commission. They provided recommendations and recommended text amendments. Those were reviewed by the zoning planning board and the town's attorney and community development staff, and were presented in April to the zoning board. The zoning board, after review, have recommended the adoption of this ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mitchell. Are, is there, are there any comments or questions?
One comment, Madam Mayor, this is a mandate by the state.
Thank you. Shannon?
Madam Mayor, if I could, I read through it too, and I think it'd be important for folks in the town to realize that really this was a clarification of a lot of definitions. You know, whether it's a special use instead of conditional use, it updates a lot of definitions, updates a lot of more detail as to what kind of structures are which, but it really has no direct impact on the current zoning map in the Town of Lake Lor. I just think it's important to recognize that. All this does is clarify what kind of structures are where and, and what a special use of a particular area would be. In my view, that's, that's what it does, just, just so that people understand what we're doing here.
Thank you, Commissioner Diorio. Any other comments or questions? Is anyone who'd like to speak to this? It is a public hearing.
I can provide a little bit further detail. It's all, the majority of this is technical in nature, and along the same lines as Commissioner Diorio stated, that there are definition updates. Those definitions are the mandated definitions from the general statute 160D. So it's, it's just alignments, nothing in particular with content, except technical updates and definition updates.
All right, any other discussion or comments? Then due to the North Carolina law, because this public hearing is being held on Zoom, we must allow at least 24 hours for any other public comment. So we will recess this public hearing on ordinance number 21-05-11 until May 13th at 1:00 PM at our special council meeting. All right, we will now address public hearing for ordinance number 21-05-11, amending chapter 91 of the subdivision regulation. Once again, if I may, Mitchell, I'll defer to you.
Mayor, this will, I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out how to unmute. I think we should probably have a motion to recess the pub, public hearing until the date you said, May 13th.
Thank you, thank you, I overlooked that. Do I hear a motion to recess ordinance number 21-06-11 until May 13th at 1:00 PM?
Madam Mayor, I move that we...
Recede.
Recess the public hearing?
Thank you, thank you, I was just stuck on recess. I move that we recess this meeting for ordinance number 21-05-TAC-11 to May 13th at 1:00 PM.
Do I hear a second?
So Mr. Bryant, what's that?
All in favor?
Bryant, yes.
Diorio, yes.
Kilby, aye. More aye.
Then unanimously, we have voted to recess this public hearing for ordinance number 21-05-11 until May 13th at 1:00 PM. Thank you, I, thank you, Mr. Morgan, for bringing that to my attention. We will now move on to the public hearing for ordinance number 21-05-11A, amending chapter 91 of the subdivision regulation. Once again, Mitchell, we call on your expertise.
This is the same 160D update, since we have multiple chapters in our ordinance. I split the update into two sections per, one per chapter. So the same technical update, a few new definitions, and mandated by the state.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments on this ordinance? Then once again, in order to allow public input and discussion, we are required to waste at least 24 hours before we can vote on that. So do you hear a mo, do I hear a motion to recess the public hearing for ordinance number 21-05-11A, amending chapter 91 of the subdivision regulations until May 13th at 1:00 PM?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Commissioner Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye. More aye.
Thank you, then unanimously, the decision is made to recess the public hearing for ordinance number 21-05-11A, amending chapter 91 of the subdivision regulations until May 13th at 1:00 PM. We will now move on to the public hearing for ordinance number 21-05-11B, amending chapter 92.116D of the zoning regulations. Do you have anything else you'd like to add for that, Mitchell?
I could provide a summary if you guys would like.
Thank you.
Yes, the proposed amendment allows for the installation of dark coated chain link fencing in street front yards of any district when enclosed to protect and secure property owned by utility or government agency. These changes, staff initiated changes, we feel are important for the protection of public utilities. In the future, cell towers will also be hopefully coming into the area, and chain link fencing is typically required for that as well within our regulations, and to ensure a standard for fences. Another topic would be the public works facility to ensure a standard for fencing.
Thank you so much. Any questions or any other discussion? Then do I hear a motion to recess the public hearing on ordinance number 21-05-11B, amending chapter 92.116D of the zoning regulations until May 13th at 1:00 PM?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Diorio, second.
All in favor?
Motion to delay, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye. More aye.
Thank you, then unanimously, the Marine Commission has decided to recess this ordinance number 20, public hearing for this ordinance number 21-05-11B until May 13th at 1:00 PM. And thank you for all the work you did, Mitchell, on this, so we could so readily pass these, pass these ordinances. We will now move on to section five of our town council meeting, which is the town manager communications, and I will defer to Shannon Baldwin. Not sure which of your department heads are here or...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, you have all of the department reports in your packet. As you recall, this was a report system that was implemented when I was, I took the town manager position. It's a very thorough process. The only thing I probably would bring to your attention that is of special note is that we have secured the grant via FEMA to begin the reservoir drain design. So I will be signing the scope of work with our engineers to, to begin that process this week. So that's just a bit of good news. I think I've already shared that with you, but it's, it's also nice to make that publicly. If there are not any other questions about any of the items in these reports, I'm glad to, to move to the next topic.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for that comprehensive report, which you've already had a chance to look at. We move on then to item number six, council liaison reports and comments. We will be in with Commissioner Diorio.
So Madam Mayor, I'll be quick. UAB did not meet this month. They plan on meeting next month to select a new member, and they will be working on policy associated with boat houses, inspection, renovation, and preparation for the sewer and wastewater treatment upgrades that we have coming out. So that's the big thing on their docket, we'll start next month.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to Commissioner Kilby.
The LAB had a special meeting scheduled last Monday, a week ago, for our, the annual lake tour. Unfortunately, Mother Nature did not work with us on that, and it poured the rain all day, and so that was canceled, hopefully till next month. There was no LAB meeting, and ABC met last month after our council meeting, monthly council meeting. They meet next on the third Monday, and general business personnel changes going on at the ABC store. The ABC store is back open for people to be able to go in rather than curbside. I think we covered that last, last month, that's my report.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Moore?
The zoning and planning board met on April 20th and installed a new, a new member, Matt Hillbush, and the, and elected a new vice chair, Randy Nelson. Beyond that, our discussion was all around the three ordinances that we just had the public hearings on. So that's, that's the, that was the extent of it, and I don't want to re-elaborate what we just discussed. So that's...
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes, ma'am.
Council liaison report from Parks and...
There we are. Yes, ma'am, I want to make sure it's unmuted. So Parks and Recreation had a very productive meeting recently, updates for, from Mrs. Dana Bradley. The Mountain Trail to Tontonka is now open for the public. I believe they do have parking appointments that you can make. Not certain how to do those online, but that will, will come to light, they have public knowledge in media and websites. So Melody Potter, who's been with the town for quite a number of years, has retired, and that was of note during our meeting. We want to thank her for all of her hard work over many years in our town's park areas and all the beautification she's done for our area. So there are, there's a lot of movement on all of our trails, trail counters are going up. We're going to see more and more movement as we're coming into our area. So the Flying Bridge is still engaging in a lot of public engagement there, and volunteers are extremely busy. They still have a couple of issues with theft, even with the, with the cameras that are up, but at least we have a way to track and try to engage the public to find these folks who are stealing items from time to time. The open space plan came up, but that's, you know, in long discussion. And there was one item note for Morse Park. Mr. Walters, the chairman, did discuss the ribbon cutting ceremony at the boardwalk, and that committee made a recommendation to, to the town council in the meeting minutes to name the new walkway, the water walk, and that is not on this agenda, but that did come up in the, those minutes also. I'd had some input for folks with the discussion of golf course projects, and those are in those public meeting minutes as well. Outside of that, that is all I have for that at the moment. LSAB and BOA met regarding a structure appeal for a bathroom at Lord Market across from the ABC store. That was reconvened 24 hours later, but I was unavailable for the reconvened meeting on that after discussion, so I do not have an update. I did not receive meeting minutes for, from the updated discussion from the 1 o'clock. So I do not have an update on the final decision from LSAB on that, and that's all I have.
Maybe you can update us that then on our meeting on the 26th, that I believe it is, our, our next council meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, I think that concludes all of our council liaison reports, and we are now at our section for public comment, and the public, whomever would like, is invited to speak. If you will please keep your comments limited to five minutes or less. If you wish to speak, simply wait for me to ask if anyone would like to make a comment, and then unmute your phone or mic, set your name and address. Comments may also be submitted in writing to the town clerk, town clerk at Town of Lake Lor, at least one hour prior to the meeting. First of all, Michelle, do we have anyone who has submitted a comment to you?
No, I have no comments that I've received.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone who is with, has joined us by Zoom from the public who would like to make a comment at this time?
This is Deborah Gar, and I would like to make a comment.
Certainly. Deborah, can you give us your address as well?
My address is 137 Firefly Cove.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Mayor, I would like to first thank you very much for the information that you provided at the beginning of the meeting about the lake drawdown. And I also greatly appreciate and understand the town's desire to use all of that money for the grant for dredging. I have a question, and then I'd like to make a comment. My question is, how long will it take for that dredging to occur, so that we don't waste the money for the dredging? Do you want me to go on with my comment, or should I?
Yeah, no, go on, go on with your comment.
Okay. Needless to say, you and I have talked before, and I also would share to the other commissioners, that I think it's very important for us to try to delay the drawdown of the lake as long as possible, for several reasons. Obviously, it is, the fall is the busiest time for businesses in Lake Lor. It is the leaf season, it's apple season, and I think it's really important for us to have the lake up during our busiest season. The second point is definitely more personal. My son is getting married in October 24th, and we have a lot of activities the weekend of October 22nd. With COVID, you know, we moved in a year ago, and with COVID, all of our friends and family have seen beautiful pictures of the lake, Lake Lor, for, for years, since we were building and moved into our house. And finally, with COVID vaccines, people are all planning on making a vacation and come to Lake Lor, and I would really hate for them to come and see my... So that's my...
Way to put it. Thank you. And Deborah, I will get back with you. I have spoken with several commissioners about it, and an approximation of how long it takes, but I don't want to be definite about that, is that we probably need two to three months, but I don't want to say that exactly in order to, to accomplish the dredging that we need. But we will, as I said, on May the 18th, we will be having a meeting with the engineers and be discussing dredging at that time too. So after that, that's really just a week away, would be able to give you a more definitive answer.
Madam Mayor, one other question related to that, that possibly you can pose at that meeting. I guess my question is, is whether all the funds have to be used by December 31st, or does the project just need to be started within this year?
No, my understanding is, please correct me if, if anyone knows other, that, other than that, the funds have to be used in the year in which they are received. Because we are, Dean, I see you there, thank goodness that you're here. Why don't you continue on with this conversation?
You are correct, Madam Mayor. The grant was for the physical, or for the calendar year of 2021, and those funds have to be exhausted by December 31st of 2021.
And to add to that, Deborah, we have the ability then in 2022 to apply for the grant again. And so I think we all know that dredging is going to be an ongoing project for us. But we absolutely, after the meeting, after the meeting on May the 18th, will have a much clearer idea of when that will be, and we'll get that information to you just as soon as we possibly can.
Maybe we can all keep our fingers crossed that whoever's doing the dredging will let us prepay regardless of when they finish the project. But thank you for hearing, thank you for hearing me out.
Well, you are certainly welcome. Thank you for joining us. Is there anyone, is there anyone else who would like to make a comment at this time?
Madam Mayor, I would.
Thank you very much. Would you state your name and address, please?
I am Ken Galloway. My wife and I live at 143 B Tree Point. I basically started learning about the history of Lake Lor's infrastructure at the forum that was conducted last July. In the meantime, I've attended about 24 board meetings and various advisory board meetings, as well as council meetings. And I just want to say that I have watched you all work very hard to, I think, do the best you possibly can to deal with all the issues that the infrastructure presents that have been essentially bequeathed to you over the years. I think, I wish... I think, I wish for that there were more people interested in those issues than perhaps might be interested in wake surfing. But I guess that's the way the world works. Recently, I was handed a document that wasn't signed by anybody. It included some things that I know to be half truths and innuendos. I wish that there was a response that could be staged for that, but I agree with the decision made that there was nobody to respond to in that circumstance. I was going to suggest that it would be important to have a second infrastructure meeting just as soon as you possibly can to meet all of those, I guess, accusations, for lack of a better word. I see that there is a special meeting, council meeting proposed later. And by the way, the item is listed, it appears that that idea has already come to the forefront and that's what you plan to do. So I'm glad to hear that. I had submitted a letter to Michelle and it was mistakenly put in with the letters about the wake surfing. So there's one last letter that you need to read in June, Madam Mayor. I do appreciate the job you do. I appreciate how hard you work and how much responsibility that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much and, and we appreciate that. And, and once again, as I said, we are dedicated to open communication and addressing all issues, but addressing the issues per se. And so we will attempt to do that and make sure that any concerns that are, that are brought forward by anyone in the community, we will address to the best of our ability. But in fact, as you said, and we all know the document to which you alluded, if, when something is anonymous, it's very difficult to know who, who exactly to address. But we are very dedicated and intend, and thank you for mentioning that community forum. And we do intend in the near future to have both another community forum and also some smaller town halls that will be open once the town hall is open, which will be May 14th in order for people to come in and on a more casual basis, if you will, and a more open basis, be able to discuss and ask questions that they're, they're concerned about. So thank you for that. And once again, just to let everybody know on Lure and the lake, we squeeze it as tight as we can. And, and if, if we can condense it into three weeks, we will. If we give the worst case scenario of that, when it's drawn down and we see we can make that smaller, we will do that. So thank you very much and for joining us. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? All right. And thank you so much, both of you, for your comments. We will move on to our next order of business, which is the consent agenda. Having had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Is there a second?
Commissioner Kilby, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Duriel, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Thank you. Then the consent agenda is approved as written. We'll move to our next order of business, which is unfinished business, and we have no unfinished business. So we move on to, to new business, reminding everyone that items B and C were struck from the agenda. So the only item under new business now is the fire department services budget discussion. Shannon, I believe, or default to you on that. I don't know if Chief Waycaster is here with us.
He was a minute ago, and I believe he also had some of the other chiefs with him as well.
He's with us, yeah.
Oh, wonderful. Then.
So I'll, I'll lead. I'll start. And so I think council knows that Mayor Pritchett, Commissioner Duriel, Chief Waycaster and I visited with the volunteer fire departments this year and basically explained our plight relative to the enormous costs that we are facing immediately. And so we basically discussed that our overall desire was to have mutual aid without exchanging funds. And so those were the two overriding principles that we used in the discussions. Two volunteer fire departments responded back and they basically did reduce the amount of funds that they're requesting to provide mutual aid to the Town of Lake Lure. And so what we did was that we basically looked at the percent reduction that they were given the, the town. And so the, the one that had the least impact on Bills Creek is the one that we're recommending that we apply to the Bills Creek contract. So that, that's it in a nutshell. And I think what we wanted to do was have the folks in Bill Creek, Bills Creek come back and just have a discussion with council and explain, explain their, their, their needs to council and then we can go from there. So I'll let Dustin take it from there. Thank you. Some good folks with him.
Yeah, Madam Mike, can you hear us?
We can. Thank you.
I'm here with some of the members of Bills Creek Fire Department, the chief, Jamie Howe, and the chairman of the board, Lou Welsh. So Bills Creek did get back with us with a letter of intent that they wanted to receive the same funds that they received in previous years. And that amount being $55,000. The other fire departments came back to us with a reduced amount. And I believe, and I won't speak for some of the members of the board, but I believe it was their intent to reduce that amount to be compatible or comparable to the other amounts that the other fire departments returned.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dustin. Are there any questions for Dustin? So if I'm understanding correctly, are we not at a point, Shannon, where we can vote on this motion?
Based on what Chief Waycaster just stated, if, if it is Bills Creek's desire to, to lower theirs by the 22%, then I think you have that information in your packet that we could, we actually could then program that amount in our budget and make sure they have those.
All right. So I just wanted to clarify that. Is that what you were saying, Dustin?
Yes, ma'am. So although I'll let Bills Creek speak for themselves. But Chimney Rock did come back with a, a reduced rate of 22%. Fairfield, Fairfield come back with a reduced rate of 47% cut. So we made the recommendation that Bills Creek follows suit with Chimney Rock and it would drop their rate from 55,000 to 42,900. That's a 22% reduction, if I'm correct.
All right. Is there, is there anyone who would like to offer any comments to us from the Bills Creek Board?
Well, it's not a decision that we could make right at this point. We would have to go back and vote on it.
Could, could you hear him, Mayor?
Yes, I could.
Okay.
Are there, are there any other questions from, does everybody understand where we are with this? Are there any questions, anything that needs to be explained?
Yeah. What's the plans over the next, say, five years with this? I mean, because once we got told this, our county budget had already been turned in. So there we was behind the eight ball on this. I mean, you know, I want, we need to know where we stand with the next, say, five.
With the next what? I missed that.
Five years.
Next five years.
Next five years. I mean, is it to cut us completely out? Say, cut every year? I mean, we kind of need to know this before our budget comes back due because it was already due when we got the word that it was going to be cut. So we done turned it into the county.
Okay. Is there anyone who wants to respond to that?
And I think, Mayor, maybe next year we go into budget negotiations with the fire departments a little bit sooner, maybe start in January. So that way they got an idea of what they need to request from the county before they turn it in. And I think that, that would be acceptable.
I think that's very reasonable. I do. I mean, we're all on the same spot right now with budgets and trying to, you know, make sure that we're, we're, we're creating our budgets and amending them in a, in a reasonable way. I don't think there's any reason anybody would have any argument against that. Is there anyone who would not be in favor of that?
And if y'all would like, I would like, I mean, I can spearhead that as far as keeping track of the time, the timing of it. Just historically, we've always done it in parallel with the town's budget process and it kind of puts us in a pinch with the county. So these guys would like to request that we do it, we negotiate these contracts a little bit sooner in the, in the coming years. So that way they know what to request from the county or if they need to make any changes.
Well, we both agree with that and are happy to put that on your shoulders to make sure it's done early in the year since you volunteered to do it. So thank you for that. So we appreciate that. So do I hear a motion on this recommended motion and requested actions?
What, what actually is your motion?
So the, the motion as written here is to approve the presented requested amounts for fire protection services for Chimney Rock, V F D and Fairfield Mountains V F D for the fiscal year of 2021, 2022 contracts and to approve fire protection services contract for $42,900, a 22% reduction to Bills Creek, V F D, a comparable rate of reduction for the service. That is the recommended motion as written.
Thank you. We stepped out of it. We need, we need to go back and vote on that. One or two ways to vote on it.
Madam Mayor, if I could, the, the way the contract is structured, we determine the amount and it's based on services. Actually, the contract is written such that at the end of any given year, we're supposed to assess what services were actually provided for compensation. So we, we've really done this as a courtesy and I understand the timing of this. But the way the, the, the contract is structured, we set the amount and we do the assessment of the services provided.
Second paragraph of your own contract, it says, cannot cover the entire area for one, from one fire station to meet I S O standards.
Right. I'm not, I'm not talking about that part of the contract. I'm talking about the, the amount of money monetary transfer.
I'm just telling you, I mean, that's, that's part of your contract.
Yeah, I agree. That's what the contract does for the, for those monetary services. Correct. So I, I don't understand your, what's your question?
I didn't have a question. I was just telling you what your contract is. You were talking about our money.
Right.
Is it, it cannot, your, the town limits cannot be covered from this one station.
Okay.
Is there a question in, in this?
And the other thing.
I'm not sure. Can you, can you, Dustin, you may have to step in here, perhaps not, and clarify for this, perhaps not understanding what's, what's being said.
So I think Chief Howes wanting to go back and talk to his board about whether or not the 42, 9 is acceptable for the amount of coverage that their department is providing. And I guess my recommendation would be that we approve the motion for the other two amounts and then approve our amount, if that's what the board wants to go with for Bills Creek. And then let them go back on whether or not they accept, because both parties have to be in agreement before we can enter into that contract.
And also you're cutting our contract, but yet you're taking services that we would be getting money for. This is where the assisted living is going to be. It's already on the G I S that the Town of Lake Lure is getting the tax money off of it.
And that, is that something that, so did y'all hear what he said? I, I don't know if you.
I, I heard the assisted living. If you could just repeat it, just to clarify and make sure we're all hearing it correctly.
So Bills Creek is saying that they're losing some commercial, commercial property tax value from us due to the assist, the assisted living wanting to be incorporated into the Town of Lake Lure. And they're not sure if that's already taking place or not. The G I S states that it has taken place. And that it comes to us, but we don't know where that's at in that process.
Let me, let me clarify. That property is outside of the Town of Lake Lure. They have not petitioned the town to be annexed into the town. And the town will not annex that property unless it's petitioned.
Already saying you getting the money. So I'm sure it's on G I S, you getting the money.
I don't know that that is coherent with the tax office. It might just, I don't know if the tax office. Okay. So I guess that's just some topics they need to discuss with your board of directors on whether or not they're. So I guess just a motion, a motion from our board to propose that we offer them that amount. If that's the way the board wants to go and then we'll wait on a response on, from their board on whether that amount is acceptable or not. That way I can move forward with the signing of these service contracts.
Is it the opinion of the board that we separate the, the two Chimney Rock and Fairfield Mountains from the motion on Bills Creek? Or that we make a motion on all three of them together? That's what I'm unclear about.
As I understand it, Dustin, you're asking that we present this motion as it's written here to approve the revised amounts to Chimney Rock and Fairfield Mountain and a revised amount to Bills Creek of basically $12,000 less than what it, had they had asked for and what it had been in the past. And then I guess it's up to them to decide whether they want to accept that or not.
That's correct. I need the board's, I need the board's permission to move forward in this process. That's correct.
I would like to mention, I think, one correction here. It's just that the percent of, of reduction for Fairfield Mountains that says minus 24%, that's not correct.
Right.
It should be 47% or 37%.
It's 37.
37%. Yeah. So I just, it's not included in the motion, but we should just correct that on that sheet.
Just to clarify, it's $40,000 reduction at 37%.
That's right. That's right.
So do I hear a motion then?
Yeah, I think I've got it, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the annual appropriations to Chimney Rock Volunteer Fire Department at 35,000 and Fairfield Mountain Volunteer Fire Department is 67,000. And we defer a decision on Bills Creek until after their deliberations of amount proposed 42,900.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Duriel, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Then the motion stands unanimously approved as stated by Commissioner Duriel. And thank you so much, Dustin, and, and from, from Bills Creek for joining us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That is our only item under new business. So the only other item that is left on our agenda is a closed session in accordance with G S 143-318.11 A3 for attorney client privilege or legal claims and with G S 143-318.11 A6 for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session for those reasons?
I'll make that motion. Moore.
Duriel, second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Duriel, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Then we will go, we will go into closed session. We will give Michelle a few minutes to make sure that the, only the people that need to be in this session are still with us on this call. I would like to say to anyone else who is on the call, this is the last item on our agenda. So after that, the closed session is over. We will simply immediately go back into open session and adjourn. I would hate to have people sitting there waiting. I would hate to have people sitting there waiting for something else when this is the last item. So Michelle, if you'll just let us know when you're ready.
Mayor, I'm stepping away just for a moment, but I'm not going far. I'll still be able to hear when you start back.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this may be the shortest meeting we've ever had with a packet that has 342 pages. I can tell you that.
Thank God for the zoning board going through that for us.
We'll add that to my prayers tonight, to be honest with you. I read through that and as I read each page, I thought, thank God, thank God for the Mitchell Anderson and the zoning and planning for sure.
I move that we adjourn from town council meeting of 11 May, open session.
Is there a second?
Kill, we can second, yeah.
All right. All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Duriel, aye.
Kill, aye. Moore, aye.
Then we stand adjourned. Our next meeting then is, just to remind everybody, is May 13th at 1:00 PM. And we will then have the, those three public hearings for the three ordinances. We are going to put those at the top of the list because the remainder of the meeting is budgetary. And that way we can address those with William. And then after that, he, I know he has some other commitments, court commitment. So Michelle is going to move the, move the things around a little bit on the agenda. So those are the very first things that we address.
Town budget is Zoom, right?
Yes.
It is.
Meeting Zoom, not in person.
Yes.
It is, it is. Yes, it is. All right then, that's all. Thank you very much.